Welcome everyone here tonight. If you would please stand for the pledge and remain standing in prayer as paid with the blood of Dr. Collins.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all, before I leave the prayer, I want to do a special prayer tonight. Many of you have probably already seen this, but one of my colleagues, Jimmy Sullivan, who was the superintendent in Rutherford County, they were out today because of the bad weather last night. And if you hadn't heard, it says many of you have heard, our youngest son, Asher, he is nine, was involved in a tragic accident last night after the storm. Neighbors were helping pick up debris, putting fences back up, et cetera. The neighborhood kids were playing in the water in the streets. Somehow, Asher got caught in the storm drain and was swept under the neighborhood streets. He eventually came out in a drainage ditch and CPR was administered for quite some time. His heartbeat was reestablished, but the damage is substantial. Currently, they're at Vanderbilt after being transported from Ascension Hospital. His lungs are severely damaged and he's not showing much brain activity at all outside of muscle jerks. Specifically pray for healing for his lungs and most importantly, brain activity to occur. Asher needs a miracle. Sweet, sweet kid, Jimmy Sullivan's his second year superintendent, 50,000 students in their district. He's a great guy and his other son has leukemia. So, they're really going through a hard time, so I asked Mr. Marty if I could say the prayer tonight and I'm going to make sure that we remember his family in our prayers. So, let's all pray. Dear Lord, we thank you this day for giving us, for all the many wonderful blessings that we have. We so often, Lord, take the things that we have for granted. Tonight is one of those nights, we pray a special blessing that you will be with Asher, the Sullivans, the entire family, all their surrounding family, those that are ministering to them, the doctors, everyone that's working with them and their entire district as they go through this time. We know it has to be hard, it has to be tragic. Reason that we're all here is because we love kids, so we know it's especially painful as a parent. We pray that you'll continue to be with them, put your loving hand on them. Pray that you'll be with us this evening as we go about the business of the district and Christ name we pray. Amen.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Motion by Mr. Jenkins, second by Mr. Farrell. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion passed. Are there any additions? Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, do we have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. McCann, second by Mr. Jenkins. Those in favor, oppose, motion passed. Dr. Collins?
I think since we had a two hour and forty-five minute budget meeting the other night, I'm going to forego mine and pass it, so.
Okay.
If that's okay with you.
That's fine. Thank you, Dr. Collins.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Burden, Director Mitch Struck.
Sorry, I passed mine, but I can't. I wasn't at that meeting, so. Tonight, we'll start, we're going to recognize two teachers for Teachers of the Month because Ms. Lane wasn't able to be here last month. So, tonight, we have, if these ladies will join me, from March, we have Ms. Karen Lane, who is a teacher at Monford High School, and for April, we have Ms. Carolyn McMillan, who is a teacher at Monford Elementary School. So, ladies, come on up and I'm going to read all the nice things your principal said about Lane walking up. Dr. Koch says about Carolyn McMillan, and she's the librarian at Monford Elementary School. Ms. McMillan spent a large portion of her career teaching reading and language arts. Her move into the library position has allowed us to use her expertise and her love for language and reading to positively influence all 800-plus students at MES. She is dedicated to making our library the place to be. She is a true supporter of our classroom teachers reinforcing concepts taught in the regular classroom. Ms. McMillan brings true positivity to our school. Her daily informational boards outside the library are an important part of every day. She uses her creativity to keep everyone informed and excited about what is happening at MES. She is truly worthy of the designation of Teacher of the Month and more. So, this is Ms. Carolyn McMillan. Congratulations. Goodness, well deserved. And then we also have from Monford High School, Ms. Karen Lane, who's standing right behind me. Come on up, Ms. Karen. Ms. Karen is most deserving of the American Fidelity Teacher of the Month, and I highly recommend her for consideration. Her commitment to high-quality teaching, her unwavering focus on her students and their progress, and the mentoring she does with her colleagues in all content areas contribute to her place among the best in our field. Ms. Lane has been a consistent and effective teacher since arriving at Monford High School and now serves as a teacher leader on our faculty. Ms. Lane is responsible not only for teaching Algebra I, but also for data analysis focusing on achievement and growth. As a teacher, she consistently produces students who perform well above expectations, many of whom have been placed in her class intentionally. She works to move students beyond their potential, well above what many believe they can accomplish. Ms. Lane's expertise has long been at-risk students, and with this year's changes in scheduling, Ms. Lane has proven just as effective with all types of students. As a teacher leader, Ms. Lane shares her expertise in instructional leadership with her colleagues. She developed a year-long playbook designed to guide teachers through tasks necessary to learn about their instructional practices. Their strengths and weaknesses with regard to standards and the strategies that ultimately produce growth among students. Ms. Lane recently led an engaging, day-long PD session designed to help math teachers dive into high-quality and effective lesson planning. Ms. Lane is not satisfied with her own success, yet she constantly strives to help others in her department and throughout our school experience that same level of success. Karen Lane is a strong teacher, a strong mentor, and an outstanding representative of Monford High School and Tipton County Schools. I recommend Ms. Lane wholeheartedly for the American Fidelity Teacher of the Month. Most sincerely, Courtney Fink. Congratulations. And your vote will be over to Ms. Erica. Last Thursday, we recognized our retirees at a reception, and first of all, we'll thank Mr. Ben Kirk. I know he's not here tonight, but he was in attendance, so we appreciate that. We had thirty-four retirees. They weren't all able to make it. Since then, we've had a few more who have decided to retire. But at that time, we had thirty-four retirees with a combined years of experience, eight-hundred forty-six years. You know that it's hard to replace that kind of experience and expertise, but we want to again publicly just thank our retiring personnel, and this is a picture of the ones who were at the reception last week. In your online folder, actually, no, this wasn't in the folder. I'd like to request a motion for the board to consider a new position for next year. It's called a Board Certified Behavior Analysis, or BCBA, and this would be for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The BCBA will be utilized for K-12 students with disabilities to monitor and assist with behavior improvement plans. The position will be funded through IDEA Part B allocations due to the significant disproportionality in the area of discipline for our students with disabilities. The department feels that this would be, that would help our schools in managing difficult behavior. And through the significant disproportionality, the district is required to allocate fifteen percent of the total budget towards improving discipline and procedures. So, Mr. Chairman, I'd like a motion to approve that new position.
We've heard the request, do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Davidson, second by Mr. Jenkins. Any questions?
Now, where is that going to be held again?
It'll be a district-wide position.
District-wide position.
I'm not sure yet where it will be housed. We'll have to decide that, but it will be utilized.
They'll be responsible for what again?
Difficult behaviors. So, this is like a, basically someone who's trained in that area, and because we were significantly disproportionate in our students with disabilities' behaviors, then we're required to put a certain amount, which is fifteen percent of the budget toward, how are we going to fix that? And this is one strategy that we feel like might help, is by hiring this person.
Was someone doing it before?
Sir?
Was someone doing it before?
You know, I think years ago, perhaps when I was an assistant principal, maybe my first couple of years of principal, we had one, they were housed at Austin P in the preschool, but I guess the funding went away.
James didn't have any of that responsibility?
He should.
No, I'm serious, I just, I didn't know if he got involved in that. I mean, you're talking about a new position, so is it taking away something that he has done?
This is in addition to.
Okay.
And this is mainly related to special needs?
Our students with disabilities.
Students with disabilities.
Is to help with that. It's part of their IDEA money.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, motion passed.
In your online folders, there's, you will see a proposal for professional development for, it's called Kids First, and that's for PD for this summer as well as next school year. The training will include ACT, reading, math, science, and social studies. We are planning a week of PD for teachers into month of July and then some additional PD during the year. But again, I'd like to request a motion for the board to consider that contract.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Ms. McClarkin, second by Mr. Jenkins. Are there questions? Those in favor, aye. Oppose, motion passed.
Also, in the online folder, there's a contract for instructor. That will be our, if you guys approve, will be our benchmark test for twenty-four, twenty-five. This is the company, it's not called Case Twenty-One, but prior, last year and the few years before, we used Case Twenty-One as our benchmark. This past year, or this current year, we went with a different company, but after conversations with principals, we have decided to go back with this company if the board so allows. So, I need a motion for that contract.
Do we have a motion? Motion by Mr. Farrell, second by Mr. Davidson. Any questions? Those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion passed.
This past weekend, I promise I almost threw, we had fifteen seniors graduate with an associate's degree from Darrishburg State Community College as our first cohort for middle college. And so, that was very exciting, and I have a picture you probably have seen on social media. That's thirteen of them, a couple of them got away before we were able to get a picture. So, if you recall, with middle college, these guys and ladies, they are full-time, or have been, full-time dual enrollment students. They spent their entire juniors and senior years of high school on the campus of Darrishburg State, attending classes all day. If they wanted to, they could go back for four o'clock and take an elective or a sport. And then, of course, they were eligible to play after-school sports and extracurricular activities. But they graduated Saturday, so they have an associate's degree and they will graduate this week or next with their high school diploma at the same time. So, we're very excited, and I just wanted to highlight that tonight.
When's it time to select the next group?
Right now, the high schools are working on it now. And speaking of high school graduation, in your online folder, there's a flyer that has all of the graduation dates and times, and of course, as always, we would love to see our board members there cheering on our students. And the last thing I have, tonight, we have a teacher from Crespe Middle School who teaches, well, he's multi-talented. He teaches eighth grade social studies. He also drives a bus sometimes for us, but I'd like to bring up Mr. Mark McLean. He was recently named the Covington Chamber of Commerce Educator of the Year, so we want to congratulate Mr. McLean. Bring him up, and he is going to share a few words with you, and then when he's finished, that will be my card.
Well, thank you all for allowing me this opportunity. I requested just a few minutes of your time. We were at the Covington-Tipton County Chamber of Commerce Awards, and I had no idea that I was the one receiving the award and the educator of the year. Once my name was called, of course, I was completely surprised. I got up and gave a speech and forgot to thank everybody, and I was just so nervous. I just felt like I needed to come up here and just say thank you personally to the school board, to Tipton County Schools, to Dr. Christopher Morris, my leader at Crespe Middle School, to the families of our community. I just am very thankful for the opportunity that you all have given me to spend my day with the children of the Covington community. I'm a second-career person, this is my fourth year teaching, and I will say I'm very blessed to be able to do what I'm doing. I love the children and I believe that they enjoy the class. And I just want you to know that I can remember as a young person, even a child, my first classroom was my bedroom, my first office was a walk-in closet. I would imagine that most children, because they spend their day with teachers, give thought to the idea that maybe one day I want to be a teacher. It took me twenty years to finally realize that, but I became a teacher. And I just want you to know that I absolutely love what we're doing here, and there's no greater work than the work you're doing. God bless you.
Thank you, Mr. McLean. Dr. Burden, thank you. Director of Operations, Mr. James Fields.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I have a couple of days, a couple of days.
We have three hundred and fifty open enrollment students this year and a total of nine hundred. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McLean. We have twenty-eight that have applied for out of district and a total of eighty-three students that will be out of district. And we're currently working on our projections for next year. Mr. McLean needs a couple more days. I want to officially thank Dr. Collins and Mr. Billy. I don't know how they worked it out in the budget for us to keep our, we're getting ready to lose three social workers because the SROs were running out. He made it happen. He found a way to get those three people to stay in the budget. And y'all know we need social workers this year, so we appreciate it, Dr. Collins.
They approved it.
In sports? And I hope I don't miss anybody, but we're doing real well in all our sports at this time of the year. Covington, Monford, and Brighton will have participants in the state competition in track and field. Covington and Monford Baseball has a great opportunity to make it to state. Brighton and Monford Softball also have a great opportunity to advance. The only thing about that is they'll probably play each other in the regional championship or the sub-state. I'm not quite sure how that goes. Brighton Middle has already advanced in track and field. They'll be playing at Austin P or participating in Austin P University next Saturday. Crespe Middle lost a heartbreaker yesterday to Houston Middle. I think they lost five to four. I left at the last inning, the crowd was getting rowdy, so I just decided to get out of there before the game ended. So, they would have advanced to the state. In July, if you all allow it, we want to bring up the SROs, each SRO from each school to celebrate them and tell them how much we appreciate it, and I think Dr. Collins may have, was I supposed to say that? And I think Dr. Collins is going to have a token or something for them. You know, we've had a couple pretty big events at our schools this year, and if it wasn't for the SRO, I would just kind of hate to think what would have happened. So, we definitely appreciate them. On the discipline report, so last year, we had thirty-two reported bullying cases and thirty were confirmed. This year, we had thirty reported and thirty confirmed. So, we had thirty bullied cases that we investigated that turned out to be bullied this year. And you know, on the grand scheme, that's probably not too bad. You know, you're looking at ten thousand kids, so I'm pretty proud of that. Fighting also went down. We had four hundred and eighteen fights, twenty-two, twenty-three. This year, we had two hundred and sixty fights. That's great. And you're going to like this one also. Vaping, we had two hundred and ten vaping citations last year. This year, we have a hundred and thirty-three. Corporate punishment, we had forty-three last year, thirty-six this year. Suspicions, OSS out of school, we had a thousand fifty-two last year, eight hundred and six this year. Reports of mass violence, violence, which is new to the policy, a thread on three or more. So, we had six, but that wasn't in the policy last year, so we didn't, obviously, we didn't have any. Bus suspensions, we had six hundred and thirty-five last year. This year, we have five hundred and one. So, I'm pretty proud of that. Nutrition update, the school nutrition staff is gearing up for summer feeding program. We will have approximately forty-five staff to prepare and deliver breakfast and lunch daily to students enrolled in summer learning loss and various camps throughout the district. Our three prep sites will be DES, Monford Middle, and Charger Academy. Summer feeding starts June third through July of twenty-sixth. Two buses were purchased and have been inspected by Highway Patrol. They are now in service. We're preparing to run forty-six bus routes for summer school. We also will purchase four new buses on next year's budget. That should be in July. The last thing I have from SACC, we've hired forty-six employees for the summer. Seven new college students are going to come back and work, and we were hired, yeah, and returning eight college students. We have a total of two hundred and sixty SACC summer camp students. SACC will be closed Memorial Day and May twenty-eighth due to summer staff training. That's my report. Someone have a question?
I have a question. All right. Do you have any bus driver trainees in the pipeline now, looking to get their bonus and stuff? Sure aware of it?
We have two, I think since last month, when you approved or when you all approved, thankfully, five more thousand. So, yeah, that's looking good. That's working out for us.
Are we still way down though in bus drivers? We're getting better, I think.
We're getting better. I wouldn't say way down. I mean, we're at a point now where we're making it work. I think he's looking for maybe four or five more drivers to be, to sustain where we are now, but I think we're in pretty good shape.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? At this time, can I bring up?
Yes, sir.
Coach Cross, Mr. Cross.
I'm here this evening to get approval for a permanent sign, for two permanent signs to be placed down at the Brighton High School softball field. Robin Jacobs began coaching softball at Brighton High School in nineteen ninety-six. Recently retired last year, and last year was his last season at Brighton. The Jacobs family has been a part of Brighton softball. Coach Jacobs has coached, both his daughters have played softball there. His daughter Emily has coached at Brighton Middle School and at Brighton High School with him. His wife Tina was at every game, you know, supporting him and his daughters. His parents always sat down at the first base foul line. They were always there at every home game. And now that Coach Jacobs has left us, we still want to continue to honor his accomplishments as a Brighton High School softball coach, and we would like to name the field Jacobs Field, not Robin Jake. We want to name it after the family, and their whole family was a part of that. We want to continue that. We want to place a ten-foot, that would be the sign at the top of the paper. That would go out by side of the scoreboard, the ten-foot long sign. And then beside the, outside the third base dugout is a smaller sign that's two foot wide, sign that just lists his accomplishments throughout his career. That sign would be also, it would be mounted on two wooden poles that would be mounted, would be anchored into the ground. We just feel like this would be an honor for him and his family and for, you know, his alumni to come back and that be a part of our program for hopefully many years to come.
I will say this, he, Mr. Cross, did ask up here, and we went through the policy. Everything he's doing is right along with the policy. They're doing it exactly right, and he's, of course, very deserving, so go ahead, I'm sorry.
I would like to make that motion that we do this, full approval of the board and myself personally. Thank you.
Second by Mr. Clark. All right, are there any questions about, should be in it? I think it's great. All those in favor? Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
CFO, Mr. Billy Darling.
Oh, chief, a long time no see.
Good evening, gentlemen. I saw it last week. Exactly right. All right, just a couple of things here, a quick inside your package. You see, there's a request there from Ms. Heather Crossen, who is the principal at Austin P Elementary. She's requesting the authority to transfer the school's checking account from their internal school fund from EnSouth Bank to Patriot Bank. And so, Mr. Chairman, I think that's appropriate for their school. Some way for motion that should be allowed and everybody be allowed to sign as appropriate on the signature card moving account at the end of this fiscal year, start of next fiscal year from EnSouth Bank to Patriot Bank.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. McCann, second by Mr. Jenkins. Any questions? Those in favor? Oppose, motion passed.
Thank you, sir. The next thing I call your attention to are the financial reports that are in your package there outlining the receipt and dispersals for one forty-two, one forty-one, one forty-three. Also, we have amendments here that are prepared, but our request tonight, Mr. Chairman, is that we schedule a special call meeting for May the thirtieth to present amendments, and the reason being, you all know, you're aware, we've got so much volume with the construction starting, that we've got a lot of insurance recovery money coming in. It's difficult to project the revenues. We had one bill that's a hundred thousand, one that's half a million, one's a million, so I don't know really what to put in there until the bills come in. We've got some projections here that we think are going to work, but this is the last chance and with the commission meetings being the way they are, we presented amendments at the finance committee meeting this past week, and I asked the chairman, I mean, the director of budget accounts, if they were going to recess to the last Monday of June, which has happened in the past, which would give us an opportunity to do this again, but he couldn't confirm that would happen, and I don't think we can take the gamble for something to come in and us not get the amendment before the year-end budget. So, we may come with just a couple, and it may be twenty-five. You know, I'm not sure how that's going to look, but if we can move that, have you have a special call meeting for the thirtieth of May?
At five thirty.
At the board's pleasure.
Five thirty, you'll put their butt?
It's for dinner that night, though.
Surprise. It'll be a surprise.
We got five million last night.
All right, let's see.
That'd be nice.
Do we have a motion to have a special meeting at five thirty on the May twentieth? A motion by Mr. Jenkins.
May thirty.
May thirty. May thirty. Yeah. Motion by Jenkins, second by Farrell. Those in favor? Aye. Motion passed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, it's all I have.
That's it.
That is it?
Hey, that's one of the first, so thank you, Mr. Darling. That sounds good. Is there any other business, anyone? Dr. Collins, would you like to add anything?
I just want to look, do you have something?
How seniors and parents informed about the scholarships available? How do they, how are they informed?
Through their, they're informed through their counselors and their administrators. I mean, their counselors really are doing a lot of that, but now, I want to throw this in too, because this is neat. This is new. Now, you tell me if I'm saying this wrong, we got a high school principal in here too. With that new ISM grant, you know, we put a career college person in each one of the high schools with that money. That's happening. That person is going to have a big role in helping those kids look for scholarships, employment, career, military, whatever. That's going to be part of that role, is helping them connect. So, the counselors already do that, administration does it a lot. We funnel things through them. Dr. Norton, our high school supervisor, pushes a lot of that stuff through. But wouldn't you say, Brian, the majority of that comes from like your senior counselor and your junior counselor, and then this new position, is that about accurate?
Yes, sir. So, it's up to the students to inform the parent, right? Correct.
Okay. We post some things, I mean, some things go on social media.
We have a link on our homepage for seniors to go to, for parents to go to and find out about all that.
Yes, sir. But a lot, at the high school level, a lot of that burden is on those high school students. Yes, sir. That's a good question.
A lot of those kids go through freshman, sophomore, and they have a counselor all the way through.
Right, yes, sir. They have a different one every year.
Do we have any kids going to the military this year?
I'm sure we do. Every year, you know, at graduation, they recognize them and they stand up, and every year, we have really quite a few. You know how many you have by any chance, Brian?
I think we have five right now.
Five?
Yes.
It's pretty neat, and they have a, they're usually all specially recognized in the program, which is pretty cool.
Yep. Dr. Collins, you want to add anything?
Yeah, just one more thing. Thank you for approving the May thirtieth meeting. There's just some things kind of in flux there. We want to make sure we get it in before year's end so that there aren't any questions later. And also, at that time, I'm going to present the capital projects timeline to you. Plus, that gives me a couple more weeks, because if there are still some things that I don't have to put in there, if we're able to do between now and then, I won't have to put that in the timeline to make that request to come out of fund, but we can use that for something else. I mean, like, and I can give you a preview, like, right now, I can tell you, we're, the plan is to repair all the bleachers, repair all the bleachers, right? But then we're going to start replacing bleachers. Like, this year, for sure, we'll start with Monford Middle, theirs are the worst, and we'll replace those bleachers. Just to give you an idea, the estimate on replacement of those bleachers is about two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. That's Monford Middle. So, that obviously would be a capital project piece, right? That'll be a chunk out of that. And then every year, we can start adding by like, probably by like And then every year, we can start adding by like, probably by like age of school. You know, you got Covington High and then Muffet High, and then you know, you got those, right? But Muffet Middle's by far the worst, so that, that would be one that you'll see when I show it to you, like for this first year. Uh, and then, of course, cafeteria tables, things like that. But that probably won't need to be in the capital projects request because we talked about that coming out of, uh, the cafeteria fund balance, right? So we can do those things. So you'll, you'll see a number of things in there. Pothole patching, pothole repairs, striping, H vac systems, a number of things we need to do. Some of the money that rolled back in, I guess, to fund balance that we had appropriated for like, uh, the softball field renovation at Muffet High School and the lights, um, we're gonna need to put that back in capital because that, that rolled back in because we didn't use it then. So it's gonna, we need to pull it back out to do it. Same with like the lights at, uh, Covington, like Covington softball field and some of that, depending on what we get for insurance. Um, so you'll see things like that. Um, but I'm gonna show you that May thirtieth. We'll have a little better number, so.
All right. Does anybody else have any questions, anything? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Jenkins and second by Mr. Clark, if you hear.